We are still in Revelation 20, and we are still technically on verse four. We hit a pretty big detour, and even to the extent of just jumping into theology, which I thought was kind of necessary because this is like, we're at that part where, like, when people talk about Revelation or just the end times, it's usually framed in like, what is your view of the millennium, right? So, and a lot of times, we assume, just by like, who we're around, like, everybody just kind of believes the same way we do. But I think it's important for a church like CCC to, you know, understand the different perspectives, because we have so many people coming from different backgrounds. There's gonna be every single view represented, probably just here in this class. So, so it's good to know, know the background for those, some of the scriptural evidence, and that's kind of what we went into last week. And so I want to do just a quick review, and I'm gonna be reading from Osborne, and I thought it would be helpful, a couple things. One, I actually put like, a little bit of an outline tonight, and this is absolutely, completely subject to change. But I want to get into Osborne's commentary a little bit, and we'll probably be using this, pulling from this a little bit more so. Up until this point, there's been a lot of agreement between Mounts and Osborne, but here is where there's a very clear deviation, and I'll get to that in just a moment. And then the question about Israel, what about Israel? Who is Israel? So, that has come up because of really what was on this chart, the difference between classical and dispensational premillennialism. So, and then some of the Old Testament verses for the millennium period, and that's gonna include Gog and Magog. So, still a week late, but you know, like, it better late than never. Jackie's not amused. And then we'll jump into Revelation 20, and then we'll pick up at five and quickly make it through 10 there, because some of this is gonna overlap. Now, with that, I wanted to kind of pinpoint this. So, Mounts, who we have been reading from, falls into the idealistic or spiritualist perspective on the millennial reign. So, what this means basically is that we are already, like, not necessarily that there has to be a millennium, but that this is a period of time that Jesus is at the right hand of the Father, he's king, and we're really just waiting for him to come back. That's it. So, all of this other stuff that's happening, that we have read about, will find its fulfillment in just the natural course of time, and then Jesus comes back, everything moves quickly right into eternity. Osborne is pre-mill, premillennialist. And so, and I think from a historical perspective, he is gonna fit much more into the classic premillennialist. Heiser is Amill or Amill, so that there is no millennium, which really technically isn't too far off of where Mounts is, ironically enough. But it's important to understand that, and historically, that the Amill position really is, really comes from Augustine. And anybody, someday, someday, Lord willing, I want to teach a church history course, just so that everybody, just for the simple fact that like, we can get into Augustine, and everybody can realize how much Western Christianity has been influenced by one man. And the more you understand Augustine and his writings, you understand that influence going forward. So anyways, enough about that. And then just a little teaser for some of the chapters and verses that we're gonna get into for understanding Israel. All right. So, just a reminder, if you have questions, put a hand up, just so that there's some level of order, even for the follow-up questions. Let's see, anything else?
At what point you said you were sharing yours?
You're already breaking the rule.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was a good gotcha, right? So, yes, so all of this is actually going to be leading into my perspective. So I will kind of roll all of this up as we go along, because we'll be touching on a lot of those tonight. So, and part of that will actually, like, we'll kind of start going down that road even just by reading some of this commentary from Osborne. So, I mean, will I do it succinctly? Probably not. There'll probably be pieces, and maybe I'll close tonight with like, this real like, just brief statement of like, how I see this is all gonna happen. But you know, everything's subject to change, right? So, all right, let's pray. "Lord God, thank you for this time that we can be together to study your word, that we can come together as your people redeemed by the blood of your son, Jesus Christ, that we can look into this vision that you gave to your servant John, and as it ties, as it ties so much of Scripture together, but to also wrestle with this message of hope even in the midst of darkness, in the midst of a fallen world. And Father, I pray that you would continue to work on our hearts, on our minds, in our spirit. Just continue to kindle a wholehearted devotion to you. Help us to see beyond our culture, our time, and to live completely devoted lives that bring you glory, that further your kingdom, that makes disciples, that shares the good news of the gospel, a life that is worshiped to you. We pray for your spirit to guide us tonight through the study of your word. Give us discernment and understanding. Be glorified during, through this time. We pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen." All right, so, from Osborne here. Just bear with me, wanna... So, this kind of summarizes what we've been talking about, but then also presents a little bit more information. So, I like little bits like that, where you're kind of circling back, but you're also like, you know, getting a little bit of new information at the same time. So, this is from Grant Osborne. "So this is easily the best-known portion of the book of Revelation, as well as one of the most divisive passages in the Bible, speaking of verses 1 through 10 of chapter 20. The Old Testament had little explicit commentary on the millennium, but the view of the coming kingdom of God as an earthly reign provided the background for the concept of an earthly millennium." So that's an important distinction. As we get into Psalm 72, Isaiah 11, Zechariah 14, and a few other places, you're not gonna hear the words "a millennium," or "a thousand years" even. But what you're gonna see is just really the foundation, the groundwork for that, for that period of the Messiah's rule and reign on the earth. "So the early rabbis drew on this and believed in a preliminary kingdom. Combining Deuteronomy 8:3 and Psalm 90:15, Akiva viewed it as a forty-year reign equal to the wilderness wanderings. Another rabbi used Micah, chapter 7, verse 15, and saw a four-hundred-year reign paralleling Israel's stay in Egypt. Yahuda used Deuteronomy 11:21 and saw it as four thousand years, the same amount of time as from creation to the present. Few issues have divided the church for as long a time as this. For the church in the first three centuries had extensive debates over chileism." So that's the chileastic, it's from the Greek for thousand. "So in the writings of Justin Martyr, Irenaeus, Tertullian, the view of a literal thousand-year reign of Christ, partly due to an overly materialistic and sensual view adopted by some in the early church, example, the gnostic Serentus, leaders began to turn away from such a literal portrait. Due to the nearly universal acceptance of Augustine's amillennial position, the issue was put to rest for the next twelve hundred years." So when I talk about Augustine's like, views and how influential they are, like, that's what I'm saying, like, the issue gets just completely put to rest for 1,200 years. "So it reopened with the Pius movement of the 1700s. And this is a leader by the name of Bengal. Postmillennialism among the Puritans, Whitby and Edwards, Jonathan Edwards, and the dispensational Plymouth Brethren movement of the 1800s. Since then, three positions have often sorely divided Christian groups. To take them in chronological order, premillennialism believes that Christ will return to earth, destroy the evil forces, and reign here for a thousand years. This period will end with the rebellion and final destruction of Satan, followed by the final judgment and the beginning of the future age. Amillennialism holds that there will be no literal earthly reign of Christ following the Perusia. They say his reign is now during the church age. Rather, Revelation 20, verses 1 through 10, is symbolic and describes the situation during the church age between the advents of Christ. Some actually call this a historical prophetic approach. Postmillennialism argues that the thousand-year period will be a time of the triumph of the gospel and a period of peace that will precede the second coming of Christ." Everybody got that? Postmill? If you work hard enough, Christ will come back. That was an unfair summary. "The issues are complex, and by no means is the solution simple. In this commentary, Osborne's commentary, I take a premillennial approach, but recognize the viability of the other two positions." He's just being nice. "This issue will not be solved until the events take place, and then we will see who is right." Honestly, it's little nuggets like that that I love reading academic commentaries. It's like, they're people too. All right, so anyways, I really thought that that was a good summary of each of those positions, and just maybe phrased a little bit differently. Yeah, I really appreciated Osborne's commentary. On that end, we'll actually revisit Osborne's commentary in light of Mounts's position as well, because that's actually where we left off, is really divulging Mounts's position on this. So, all right. Does anybody have any questions? Because I'm gonna switch gears just a little bit to answer the question of Israel before we move on. Okay, I do want to be a little bit, I want to be quick about this, just because I've talked about this before, and I, and so I know this is gonna be a repeat, but I don't think we necessarily talked about it in an eschatological sense, in an end-time sense. So, the reason we're talking about this is on that paper in front of you, it actually mentions during the premillennial, classic premillennial position, during, underneath the church age there, it says, "The church has replaced Israel." Then in the dispensational premillennial position, at the very bottom, right under where you see it says tribulation, it says, "Israel returns, temple rebuilt, Israel a key player." So the question is, like, oh, well, what about Israel? Because Israel is actually not mentioned in any of the other positions. Now, the church replacing Israel in the classic premillennial position is like, it's referred to as replacement theology. So if that's something you want to look up, there you go. That's exactly how you would approach that. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up? So that was a setup. That's a setup. You got some shenanigans up front here. All right. So, okay, so I'd like to begin with Romans 8. Actually, let's go ahead and move forward to 9. I'm trying to condense this a little bit. "So Paul begins by saying, 'I am telling the truth in Christ; I am not lying; my conscience testifies with me in the Holy Spirit, that I have great sorrow and unceasing grief in my heart, for I could wish that I myself were accursed, separated from Christ, for the sake of my brethren, my kinsmen, according to the flesh, who are Israelites, to whom belongs the adoption as sons, for the glory and the covenant and the giving of the law and the temple service and the promises; those are the fathers, and from whom is the Christ, according to the flesh, who is over all; God bless forever. Amen.'" So, so Paul is seeing the Jewish people as a part of Israel, as rejecting the Messiah, are now separated. And he wishes that he himself were separated, so that they would be in, so that they would believe. "But it is not as though..." Verse 6, "So it is not as though the word of God has failed, for they are not all Israel who are descended from Israel; nor are they, nor are they all children, because they are Abraham's descendants; but through Isaac your descendants will be named. That is, it is not the children of the flesh who are the children of God, but the children of the promise are regarded as descendants." So then you get into the Sarah and Isaac, Jacob and Esau. And the whole idea here is that it's those who hold on to the promise that maintain that covenant loyalty to God that are the ones that are considered Israel, a true Israel. Now, if we fast forward here to 11, we kind of round out the argument a little bit that Paul is making. So Romans, chapter 11. Does anybody else have a heading there? Israel is not cast away? Not rejected? There you go. "So I say then," starting at verse 1, "I say then, God has not rejected his people, has he? May it never be, for I too am an Israelite, a descendant of Abraham, of the tribe of Benjamin. God has not rejected his people whom he foreknew. Or do you not know what the Scripture says in the passage about Elijah, how he pleads with God against Israel? 'Lord, they have killed your prophets; they have torn down your altars; and I alone am left, and they are seeking my life. But what is the divine response to him? I have kept for myself seven thousand men who have not bowed the knee to Baal.' And the same way then, there has also come to be, at the present time, a remnant according to God's gracious choice." So, it's important to remember that for what happened in Jerusalem on the day that Jesus was arrested and was crucified, that it wasn't all Israel that was participating. That there were many that were believing that Jesus was the Messiah, and if they didn't then, fast forward 43 days, everybody doing the count, 43 days, and you have Pentecost, or 53 days, I'm so sorry, 53 days, and what do you have but 3,000 coming to faith? Then you have many, many more coming to faith, I mean, just go through the book of Acts. And the whole ministry mantra was to the Jew first, and then to the Gentile. So really, within one year, within one year of Jesus's ascension, within one year of Pentecost, you have thousands of the Jewish people believing, pledging their allegiance to Jesus as the Messiah. What's interesting here is when you start referring to like, the Jewish people and going throughout the diaspora, the dispersion, so all around the Mediterranean and even heading east, because remember, the tribes were dispersed from the exiles. There is this collective idea of Israel, and then this larger chunk within that, that is the Jewish people. Were they all from Judah? Not necessarily, or at least not from the tribe of Judah, but many had migrated south, and you had the Levites mixed in, Benjamites, you had, you know, all these different tribes that were within that, that were carted off into the exile, and not everybody came back. Many stayed in Iraq. Many stayed in Iran and in Syria. So, this whole idea, what Paul is addressing here is that even though the Jewish people had rejected the Messiah that was to come to them, not everybody had rejected. Elijah thought he was by himself. What he didn't know is that God had already saved 7,000. And even though, maybe according to, you know, the numbers, Paul might have felt like he was by himself, but he's also recognizing here how many thousands have already come to faith. It's just, he just realizes how big of a task is in front of him. So it's important to remember, and this is something that really we miss out a lot, is that for the first 50 years, the church was primarily Jewish. Like, 90%. Okay, don't quote me on the 90%, but it's a lot. And as Paul is moving throughout the Mediterranean, he's going to the Jew first, he's speaking in synagogues, he's giving the people of God the opportunity first to accept the message or reject it. And this, and really, it's out of that, that by the time Romans is written, that like, you can hear his heart breaking as he is writing these chapters. And so he's also recognizing that not all Israel is Israel. What about those that came out of Egypt? Sons of Abraham, sons and daughters of Abraham, came out of Egypt, came to Sinai, and worshiped the golden calf? Or rejected the law that God was giving to his people? Would they have continued to be considered Israel? No, they would have died in their rebellion. They probably wouldn't have stuck around very long. They probably would have been a part of a group going back to Egypt, because you know, the leeks are better there, and the garlic, and you know, everything else. So, it's important to understand that, and we're gonna get into like, some definitions, right? But it's important to understand how Paul is viewing this, and for us to kind of combine that with what we know within the New Testament of who is Israel? How do the Jewish people fit into that? And then even those that have accepted the Messiah? Because what we need to quit doing Because when we do this, we are putting these at odds. This is Luke's opinion. This is how I'm reading this. And we'll get to this a little bit further. So, moving on into chapter 11. I say then, verse 11 of chapter 11, "I say then, they did not stumble so as to fall, did they? May it never be, but by their transgression salvation has come to the Gentiles to make them jealous." So what he's looking at is in this big picture, that the opportunity has come to the Gentiles. "Now if their transgression is riches for the world, and their failure is riches for the Gentiles, how much more will their fulfillment be? But I am speaking to you, who are Gentiles, inasmuch then as I am an apostle of Gentiles, I magnify my ministry. If somehow I might move to jealousy my fellow countrymen and save some of them." Okay, is everybody catching that? He does not see them as saved. I think a lot of times, we have our own dispensational baggage that we want to claim every Jewish person has already saved, and even at the cost of our whole theology about Jesus Christ and his atoning work. I'm just calling that out. So, he is hoping to bring them to jealousy, that they would become saved by the blood of Jesus Christ. "For if their rejection is the reconciliation of the world, what will their acceptance be but life from the dead?" He's seeing them as dead, if they come to Christ, boom, life. "If the first piece of dough is holy, the lump is also, and if the root is holy, the branches are too. But if some of the branches were broken off, and you being a wild olive were grafted in..." Remember, he's talking to Gentiles. "...were grafted in among them and became partaker with them of the rich root of the olive tree, do not be arrogant toward the branches. But if you are arrogant, remember that it is not you who supports the root, but the root supports you." Okay, so the root, the tree is Israel. It's the covenants. It's everything that we read in the first two-thirds of our Bible. Like this is the groundwork for it. So that's why, that's why even as Gentiles grafted in, we need to be reading our whole Bible. Because it's the same God from beginning to end. And so as we hold to that identity and understand, we are to function in, really, in humility. And to completely stay in tune with what God is doing. That really, that, this part of like my theology, when I read the Gospels, it's just, it, at some point, it's like with a profound sadness. Because these were a covenant people that missed the Messiah. Because of their own contemporary theology, their own expectations, their own ideas of what it should have been. So then like, you know, I think you've heard me maybe, you know, it's like gripping sand, right? Like our thoughts, our expectations of how God's going to do this. So you know, it's ironic, like as, you know, we teach the Revelation, I'm just like, yeah, we're just holding sand here. God is going to do what he's going to do. The most important part is for us to be obedient and to stay in line with his will. Because if God had these huge surprises for his first advent, what's the second advent going to look like? I'm probably not, I'm not thinking that it's going to be Cookie Cutter, or like somebody, you know, made a movie or wrote a fictional series about, or something like that. We just stick with it and, you know, ah, yeah. So anyways, back to eleven here. You will say then, branches were broken off so that I might be grafted in. Quite right, they were broken off for their unbelief, but you stand by your faith. Do not be conceited, but fear, for if God did not spare the natural branches, he will not spare you either. Behold, then the kindness and severity of God to those who fell, severity, he's talking about the Jewish people, but to you, God's kindness. If you continue in his kindness, otherwise you also will be cut off. They also, if they do not continue in their unbelief, will be grafted in, for God is able to graft them in again. Isn't that awesome? That's Paul's hope. But what it causes us to recognize is that Paul did not see his people, ethnic Jewish people, even those who were religiously Jewish. Anybody that rejected Jesus was not saved. All right, let's go to Ephesians two. All right, so, and really like go back, you know, read Romans eight through eleven this week if, looking for a little extra reading outside of the, you know, reading guide that Mike provided, but just specifically on this, it's, I mean, it's important stuff. But jump into Ephesians two. Ah, it's just such a great chapter. All right, starting in verse eight, verse eight. For by grace you have been saved through faith, and that not of yourselves, it is the gift of God, not as a result of works, so that no one may boast. For we are his workmanship created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand so that we would walk in them. Therefore, remember that formerly you, the Gentiles in the flesh, who are called uncircumcision by the so-called circumcision, which is performed in the flesh by human hands. So who's he talking to? He's talking to Gentiles, right? Remember that you were at that time separate from Christ, excluded from the commonwealth of Israel, and strangers to the covenants of promise, having no hope and without God in the world. But now in Christ Jesus, you who formerly were far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ. For he himself is our peace, who made both groups into one and broke down the barrier of the dividing wall. Okay, so this whole idea here is that kind of taking off the grafting in, it's by Christ's sacrifice, by his blood, that he has made these two groups into one. It is only by Jesus's blood that us as Gentiles have been grafted into the tree that is Israel. So, what you could take here in verse twelve is all of those things in a negative are now turned on their head in a positive, where we were at that time separate from Christ, now we're in Christ. Excluded from the commonwealth of Israel? Oh. Now we're included in the commonwealth of Israel. And that's some state language there too. Strangers to the covenants of promise? No longer. Those covenants belong to us too. Because they belong to Israel. Having no hope and without God in the world, we have hope and we have God in this world. So, it's interesting when we approach this, it, it kind of smooths some things over, it provides some clarity. Because now, one, we're avoiding two different ways of being saved. It's just through Jesus Christ. All of a sudden, when we are looking back and reading some of these verses in the Old Testament of Israel, and there is reference of being brought in from the nations, that word nations is actually the word we translate as Gentiles. It's kind of a fun little connection there where it's like, oh yeah, that's the Gentiles being included in this. That every tongue, every nation proclaims Jesus as Lord. So, it's not a matter of the church replacing Israel. I think it's a theological piece where Israel is the church. Because remember, what, what does the word church mean? It means a gathering. That's it. It was the name for their gathering. And I know people want to make, you know, take like the literal translation of the word, like the called out ones. Well, yeah, if you have a gathering, you're gathering from a larger group. Right? There's a call out there where like this group has gathered together. And so, we've been grafted into Israel. This is the gathering of Israel. Whereas many rejected the gathering, others accepted it and became a part of it. So I believe that Israel is the church. The church is Israel. Now, what does that mean for the modern state of Israel? Ooh, let's stop the recording. I'm just kidding. So, so just because within the, as we see different ideas take hold within the church, and the ramifications they have on history, as history is always, I mean, time stops for no one, right? And so it's continually moving forward, but when you have these ideas, they have these ripple effects, like a pebble in a pond. Like Augustine, right? All of a sudden, like everybody's pre-mill, and he's like, ah, we're in it. And then all of a sudden, everybody just takes that idea for twelve hundred years. And so, but the first three hundred, you know, everybody was on the same page because they were reading the Old Testament with a certain level of literal application. Very early on, the church became predominantly Gentile after the first hundred years, after the first seventy-five years. And all of a sudden, there was a divorce between this idea. And that's where we get like the earliest form of a replacement theology of the church replaced. So they were taking some of those verses where the Jewish people, Israel, had rejected Messiah. And they were like, well, then who replaced? Oh, it's the church. The ecclesia. So it just moves on from there. How conveniently, there's the Catholic Church, the universal assembly, right? That is what takes hold, and that becomes the predominant viewpoint from then forward. Not a grafting in. And so what this leads to is a complete separation, a complete divorce from everything we read in the Old Testament, including the prophetic passages. As we are circling back on this with this understanding, these passages, we don't have to read them as being far off. We can read ourselves into this. Not that we've replaced the Jewish people that have accepted Messiah. We're in with them. The Jewish people that have rejected Messiah is like every Gentile that has rejected Messiah. Okay, there's a lot of really like eyebrows are down, like, oh, I'm thinking about this. Thinking about the ramifications of it. All right, Jim, first question.
You mentioned the state of Israel earlier. Is it fair to say the state of Israel? Hmm.
That's what I was building up to, yes.
Follow nonbelievers?
Well, so it's interesting that, so with the state of Israel, like it was a purely Jewish Zionist movement. Late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, saw its fruition, you know, in the forties, up until that time, you had, you know, mass immigration to that region, and which resulted in all kinds of conflict. Because you know, it was an empty land. So there were plenty of people already living there, and then it was just carving it out. So it's interesting though that we see that the state coming about of that. But that happens because of the strong evangelical movement here in the United States, twisting the arm of the British, making that a reality. There's a whole lot of history to read on in that. But yeah, they're not Christian. Predominantly Jewish, the only Christians that were in that region were the Palestinians. And that was upwards of like seventy-five percent. Today, it's roughly like ten percent, maybe eight. Same thing with Lebanon. There were parts of Iraq that had, you know, large amounts of Christians. Like, I mean, churches that go all the way back. Even in Syria. All the ones that weren't wiped out by the Muslim conquest in the six, seven hundreds, six through eight hundreds. So, yeah, we, and even today, like Christians are being persecuted by Orthodox Jews in Israel, especially in Jerusalem. I was actually just reading something yesterday about, you know, attacks within the Armenian quarter. Because they're starting to like try to reclaim more of that territory. Yep, so, so the modern state of Israel, I would liken it to like what we refer to as Great Britain, right? Or United Kingdom, but Great Britain is home to the Britons, the Briton tribe. France, the Franks, right? And so you have these different tribes that, you know, bear, the nations today bear the names of those tribes. You had the Jewish people moving to the land of Israel, which they obviously saw as their ancient homeland, and so they took the name, the state of Israel. Now, what role do they have in the end? Hey, I am all for revival. I am all for them coming to believe that Jesus, Yahshua, is the Messiah, that there's this mass revival that goes through, and that all of a sudden, the nation-state of Israel becomes synonymous with religious Israel. That which we are all a part of. So, but until that time, until they claim and hold to Jesus as a Messiah, they are not to be confused with spiritual Israel that Paul's talking about. More like ninety years. Because a lot of it does go back to Billy Graham. Uh, and he was courted by like, well, not just Queen Elizabeth, but uh, there was quite a few Jewish people that had befriended him and had a profound influence on him and his views of it. And so then he in turn is also bending the ear of different presidents as well. Um, and so through his teaching, through his encouragement, there was an understanding that was presented there within evangelical Christianity for like the future, the state of Israel, and continuing to sponsor that and their role in the end.
So there's really nothing in scripture that would support that?
Except just reading two different camps. There's Israel, because obviously it says Israel, but then, oh, the church. These are two different things.
But they were referred to as Israel even after they were put into exile and all that. So it's not just a geopolitical.
No, it's not. Right, right. But if you were to read, you know, if, whether it be, you know, with the Battle of Armageddon, or in some of the Old Testament prophecies, like if you have the opportunity to create a state, all of a sudden, you have put one little piece of a eschatological puzzle in place.
Doesn't seem very valid.
Well, people have different motives and intent, and so it's just part of it. Honestly, I think it goes in part, in part, I mean, just because like of how much evangelical Christianity has supported Israel and even come up with like theological reasons for that, and just how it fits into the end time scenario within dispensational millennial Christianity or, you know, classic even. Yep. Yeah, I mean, it, and it's at that cost, right? I mean, yeah, it's sponsoring an entity that is persecuted Christians that did not, you know, that doesn't claim Christ, that, I mean, just the opposite of it. And really, and it pokes a lot of holes within our own like atonement theory of Christ's sacrifice. So, so now, now, should the United States support Israel in geopolitical matters? Well, like the church doesn't have to have a say on that. I mean, it's the one democracy in the, in the, in the Middle East, and so do we want that kind of foothold and different thing, you know, like that's geopolitical matters. But it doesn't have to tie into prophecy. A couple of things as we get started again, I just want to reiterate that CCC does not have a position on any of the things that I just talked about. Uh, the, this in no way compromises the church's statement of faith on the church. Because when we believe that these are the same thing, the statement of faith for the church totally falls in line with this. Also, just a little bit of a word on antisemitism. There's absolutely zero room for that within the faith, within, as Christians. Like there shouldn't be any kind of antagonism towards any ethnic group ever for us as Christians because Christ died for all of us. So as I am talking about this, as Paul is talking about this, it shouldn't be considered as antisemitic. Okay, so I just want to, like, this is in no way a reason to be mean, actually just the opposite to understand, like, according to Scripture, the current status salvifically of the Jewish people who do not claim Jesus as a Messiah. We should be that much more generous and loving and gracious and kind and forthright with the truth instead of making excuses for their theology and their rejection of Jesus. That being said, there was a few questions that we left off with. That was my damage control. So let me just clarify, my view of the current state of Israel is not negative per se. I've been there a few times and I love it. And really, the quality of life within the state of Israel is a lot greater than what you see in many other areas in the Middle East. So I will make that statement and so I, please do not take me as anti-state of Israel or anything like that at all. Just want to be clear, but I also want everybody else to know the Christian populations inside of Israel and outside of Israel and what their experience is. Because if we're also talking about, you know, just understanding, like, it's good to know and think about that. And it's, and anytime there's war or whatever, it's always thinking universally, the body of Christ, how is the body of Christ affected when nation-states go to war? If we were all proclaiming Christ as king and had that influence in governments, would there be less war? That being said, how do the Jewish people see Christians? Well, the Talmud has quite a few very choice sayings in reference to Jesus. And many scholars will believe that these references, they don't name Jesus exactly, but it's language that is generally inappropriate for me to say in front of all of you. It is not kind. It is actually very derogatory. I'll save it for you guys if you want to Google search. What is the Talmud's? Oh yeah, completely. Oh yeah, yeah, it's anti-Jesus. It is absolute, and for the follower, like, like they believe that Jesus is burning as a false prophet in his own filth, in hell, in the equivalent of their Gehenna. So, and for all of his followers will be joining him. They see Jesus as a false prophet. So.
Which is what they saw when it was a law, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and hence the persecution of people being kicked out of synagogues, like what we've just preached through, what we've talked about, like with the experience of the seven churches, how many a times, you know, the, I mean, and Jesus even refers to them as the synagogue of Satan. So, you know, kind of provides a little bit of context there and understanding of just really the severity of, you know, the experience of Jews who did proclaim Jesus at that time, as well as the God-fearing Gentiles who were grafted into that and were continuing to meet at the synagogue until they too were kicked out. So, so Jewish people do not see Christians as saved, as grafted in, as anything like that. It's really just following an apostate Jew. As following a false prophet. Like period, full stop. So it's, yeah, I mean, it's really, it's important for us to see that and to understand that. So, yeah.
But there are Messianic Jews, so are they?
Yeah. Well, yeah, absolutely. They are remnant. So I'm, thank you, Jackie. Like when I say, when I'm just saying Jew or Jewish person, Jewish people, like I'm pretty much referring to people who do not believe that Jesus is the Messiah. And technically, I would refer to them as Messianic Jews. So I apologize if that was confusing before, because there are still Jewish people coming to faith in Messiah today, and they are Messianic Jews. And that has happened for the last 2,000 years. So it's not like it was just, oop, stopped with the last apostle or the last missionary trip of Paul. Like this has continued on that, and God is opening people's eyes, not just among the Jewish people, but even among Muslims through dreams and visions. So even without a missionary going, God is doing that work. He is going before everyone. Yes, okay. What are the non-Messianic Jewish people waiting for? Are you ready for this? They're waiting for the Messiah. So this is, this is, I believe, like the beautiful opportunity that is afforded with Jesus's return. And this is my prayer, that for all the Jewish people, non-Messianic Jewish people that have not accepted Jesus as the Messiah, is that when he comes back, they believe. I just hope it's Jesus they believe in and not a false prophet, not a beast. That's, that's the hard part right there. But remember, they're reading, the first two thirds of this book, like, it's the same as ours. And so when we read the verses, and we'll, we'll get into those here in just a second, from Joel, Isaiah, Zechariah, Jeremiah, Ezekiel, Daniel, Amos, Zechariah, Zephaniah, like, that's what they can read. That's their hope. So that there is hopefully this point where there's this convergence, when Jesus comes back, if the Spirit hasn't already moved and caused a revival, that when Jesus comes back, I hope and I pray that there is the opportunity for them to repent and proclaim Him as Messiah. That is my prayer? Yeah, so there's Jews for Jesus, which is Messianic Jews and Jews for Judaism, which is the anti. When it says all Israel, it is this combination. It's not this retroactive, non-believing Jews. Because, and I think that's Paul's hope, is that after the fullness of the Gentiles has come in, that that revelation is going to happen to the Jewish people who will become Messianic Jews. But it already started with the Jewish people. And that there were a significant number that became Messianic Jews, following Jesus, claiming, proclaiming Him as the Messiah, and then it has moved to the Gentiles. But still, like we've said all along, Jewish people have come to faith in Jesus as the Messiah. So First Peter, chapter two. Mr. Bakers, you have any, was there another question there? Was that? That was, okay. First Peter, chapter two. Just kind of reiterating some of the language that we see in the New Testament. So nine through 10. Yeah, nine and 10. So quoting from Isaiah 43, verse 20. Deuteronomy 10:15, Isaiah 61:6, Isaiah 66:21. "But you are a chosen race, a royal priesthood, a holy nation, a people for God's own possession, so that you may proclaim the excellencies of Him who has called you out of darkness into His marvelous light; for you once were not a people, but now you are the people of God. You had not received mercy, but now you have received mercy." So it's verses like that that are significant because it goes back to our identity as the holy nation, a holy priesthood, all of the language that is rolled up in the Old Testament is coming to fruition in the New Testament with doors wide open and the doorway is Jesus, that nobody enters except through Him. And I think he had a few stories that alluded to that. So, so that's a whole idea. When we talk about kingdom, when we talk about Him being king, we're not talking about a kingdom divided between Gentiles and a Jewish people that calls themselves Israel. He's got one nation, one kingdom, one king for that kingdom, and it's Israel. So believes Luke. So there you go. Any other questions before we start diving into some of the Old Testament verses specifically that tie into the millennial period? And then this is going to lead us to Gog and Magog, and we'll pick up in chapter 20 from there. Sorry, Jackie. Get that look, I'm just like, oh. All right, so let's begin. Oh man, these are fun. All right, let's go to Isaiah, chapter two. Is everybody good on the Israel theology? Is everybody at least understand what I've said and communicated about what I believe? Remember, it's not something that you have to accept just because I said it, we can disagree agreeably. The only thing I would press, if you disagree with me on that, is that if you have the opportunity to speak to a Jewish friend, colleague, coworker, whatever else, that you would share Jesus. That you wouldn't just approach and say, oh, you are saved anyways. I hope that, you know, Jesus means enough to you that you would want to share the good news of the gospel with absolutely everybody around you, for anyone that doesn't proclaim Jesus. So just don't miss that opportunity. So, all right. Said that and closed right where I was. Okay, so in line with the promise of a multinational kingdom, Isaiah, chapter two, verses two through four. "The word which Isaiah, the son of Amos, saw concerning Judah and Jerusalem, now it will come about, that in the last days the mountain of the house of Yahweh will be established as the chief of the mountains, and will be raised above the hills, and all the nations will stream to it." Remember that word, nations, Gentiles. "And many peoples will come and say, 'Come, let us go up to the mountain of Yahweh, to the house of the God of Jacob, that he may teach us concerning his ways, and that we may walk in his paths; for the law will go forth from Zion, and the word of Yahweh from Jerusalem.'" "And he will judge between the nations, and will render decisions for many peoples; and they will hammer their swords into plowshares, and their spears into pruning hooks. Nation will not lift up sword against nation, and never again will they learn war." Wow, that sounds nice, doesn't it? Okay, let's jump to Amos with the restoration of Israel and the inclusion of Gentiles. Amos, chapter nine. Amos, chapter nine, starting at verse 11. "In that day I will raise up the fallen booth of David, and wall up its breaches. I will also raise up its ruins and rebuild it as in the days of old, that they may possess the remnant of Edom, and all the nations who are called by My name." Declares Yahweh, who does this? "Behold, days are coming, declares Yahweh, when the plowman will overtake the reaper and the treader of grapes, him who sows the seed, sows seed, when the mountains will drip sweet wine, and all the hills will be dissolved. Also I will restore the captivity of my people Israel, and they will rebuild the ruined cities and live in them. They will also plant vineyards and drink their wine, and make gardens and eat their fruit. I will also plant them on their land, and they will not again be rooted out from their land, which I have given them, says Yahweh your God." So dwelling in safety and security. At the beginning there, we see "all the nations who are called by My name." So just recognizing that members of, around the world will be called by His name. So we see that Acts 15 as well. Let's go ahead and So to that, let's go to Joel, chapter two. So go left. So the promise of the Spirit in the day of the Lord, starting at verse 28. "It will come about after this, that I will pour out My Spirit on all mankind. And your sons and daughters will prophesy, your old men will dream dreams, your young men will see visions. Even on the male and female servants I will pour out My Spirit in those days." So Peter actually quotes from Joel in his sermon at Pentecost. "I will display wonders in the sky and on the earth, blood, fire, and columns of smoke. The sun will be turned into darkness, and the moon into blood, before the great and awesome day of Yahweh comes." Hey, a fun little thing to do, fun, in quotes, right? But anytime like there's a prophecy or you see an italicized part in a verse in the New Testament, go back to the Old Testament and read it in its context. And also know, notice where it leaves off. So as Peter is quoting from 28 and 29, it leaves off. And so as we move on into 30, that's when we start getting into like some of the end time stuff. And this isn't the only time that happens, it actually happens quite frequently. So anyways, just anytime, you know, you're reading through Matthew or, you know, any of the verses where it's quoting from the Old Testament, like just read on a little bit and see what's there. It's, it's a fun little thing. "So I will display wonders in the sky, and on the earth, blood, fire, and columns of smoke. The sun will be turned into darkness, and the moon into blood, before the great and awesome day of..." before the great and awesome day of Yahweh comes. And it will come about that whoever calls on the name of Yahweh will be delivered. For on Mount Zion and in Jerusalem there will be those who escape, as Yahweh has said, even among the survivors whom Yahweh calls. So. Let's see. We, we really could just read the entire rest of Joel and see a lot of that fulfillment. Judgment upon the nations. Verse eighteen of chapter three of Joel three. And in that day the mountains will drip with sweet wine, the hills will flow with milk, and all the brooks of Judah will flow with water, and a spring will go out from the house of Yahweh to the valley, to the, to water the valley of Shetim. Egypt will become a waste, and Edom will become a desolate wilderness because of the violence done to the sons of Judah and whose land they have shed innocent blood. But Judah will be inhabited forever in Jerusalem for all generations, and I will avenge their blood, which I have not avenged, for Yahweh dwells in Zion. All right, so let's go to Isaiah sixty. So this is Gentiles in New Jerusalem. So a glorified Zion, arise, shine, for your light has come, and the glory of Yahweh has risen upon you. For behold, darkness will cover the earth and deep darkness the peoples; but Yahweh will rise upon you, and his glory will appear upon you. Nations will come to your light and kings to the brightness of your rising. Lift up your eyes roundabout and see. They all gather together, they come to you. Your sons will come from afar, and your daughters will be carried in their arms. Then you will see and be radiant, and your heart will thrill and rejoice, because the abundance of the sea will be turned to you. The wealth of the nations will come to you. A multitude of camels will cover you. The young camels of Midian and Ipha, all those from Sheba, will come. They will bring gold and frankincense, and will bear good news of the praises of Yahweh. All the flocks of Kedar will be gathered together to you. The rams of Nebayoth will minister to you. They will go up with acceptance on my altar, and I shall glorify my glorious house. Who are these who fly like a cloud and like the doves to their lattices? Surely the coastlands will wait for me, and the ships of Tarshish will come first to bring your sons from afar, their silver and their gold with them, for the name of Yahweh, your God, and for the Holy One of Israel, because he has glorified you. Foreigners will build up your walls, and their kings will minister to you. For in my wrath I struck you, and in my favor I have had compassion on you. Your gates will be opened continually, they will not be closed day or night, so that men will, may bring to you the wealth of the nations with their kings led in procession. For the nation and the kingdom which will not serve you will perish, and the nations will be utterly ruined. The glory of Lebanon will come to you, the juniper, the box tree, and the cypress together to beautify the place of my sanctuary, and I shall make the place of my feet glorious. The sons of those who afflicted you will come bowing to you, and all those who despised you will bow themselves at the soles of your feet, and they will call you the city of Yahweh, the Zion of the Holy One of Israel. So it can just go on from there. So this will actually fit in later in chapter twenty, and then also what we're about to read in Zechariah. So think of this as like after, as maybe like at the beginning of the millennial reign of Jesus. So if we were to take a pre-mill position, Jesus comes back, whether it's the battle of Armageddon that early on, or just the destruction of the beast and his armies. And Jesus sets up his rule to rule through for that thousand years, be it symbolic or literal. But the nations are coming and giving homage to Jesus as king. So that's how kind of this would be read from a pre-mill position. Do you have a question?
I'll pass.
Okay. All right, Zechariah, chapter nine. Yeah, so how can we read a second coming into that when it wasn't initially written with that intent?
Right.
So because of the continued revelation of what we receive in the New Testament, we can go back and read and be like, oh, that hasn't happened yet. And it hasn't happened in the first advent, and it's definitely not happened since then. This must happen in the fulfillment of it. Whether it's talking about the root or the booth of David or different things like that where there's like, oh, that's pointing to like, you know, who else is going to be king in Israel? At that point where the nations are coming and bringing the wealth of nations and rebuilding and building a temple to God, to Yahweh. So when we take what we know from revelation, from different, you know, parts through that, through the New Testament, we can, we're basically, we're projecting onto that a second coming or post-second coming of Jesus. So I, I mean, just, that's what we're doing. You know, even though it didn't say, hey, and Jesus is going to, you know, that'd make things a lot easier and, you know, for ministry purposes and everything else. But it doesn't, and that's really, even with the first coming, there was still kind of that same aspect of it where they're going back and reading Isaiah fifty-three and like, oh, the suffering servant. You know, here, you know, Joseph fits that model, but like who could, who else could that be talking about? Well, there were some theories that it was the Messiah, that that was going to be his purpose. But, you know, man, that was a minority. But yet, and this is the reason that when we read the New Testament through the Gospels, through Acts, all those Old Testament quotations is because they were creating an apologetic. Everybody heard about apologetics, right? You're giving a reason for what you believe. In the same way that when we're talking about what we believe and maybe our differences and nuances within Christianity, right? Oh, you're an Amil, you know, take an Amil position, I take a pre-mill position, and like, oh, what's the verses that back that up? Well, as they're writing to fellow Jewish people who had not yet heard the gospel or heard about Jesus, they are creating an apologetic, a Bible study out of the narrative of the story of Jesus's ministry time and even of his birth. So they're going back and pulling from the Old Testament to show them why they believe that Jesus fulfilled all of those things. That's originally why that was written. And even for like Matthew handing it to his disciples, it's like, hey, so that you guys will know these things, and here's the scriptural proof for why they had to happen that way. So they get not just the story of Jesus's life and ministry, they're also getting the Bible study part of it. Before it was a Bible study. Okay. So, so anyways, that's, so when we're reading, we're obviously, we are reading into that Jesus, because there's nobody else. It's only Jesus that can fulfill that.
That just raises more questions.
Oh, I'm sure. That's all right. So, well, we can, yeah, we can tackle those. So Zechariah, chapter nine. At some time. I'm trying to get to Ezekiel for Jackie's sake. Too late. I got, I got ten minutes. I got, wait, what time is it really? Is that right? Okay, I got ten minutes. I can do this. All right, Zechariah, chapter nine, verses nine and ten. Rejoice greatly, O daughter of Zion, shout in triumph, O daughter of Jerusalem. Behold, your king is coming to you. He is just and endowed with salvation, humble and mounted on a donkey, even on a colt the full of a donkey. Ooh. Everybody remember that from the triumphal entry? Yeah? So remember what I was saying before about like reading the first, like reading the prophetic part that's quoted in the New Testament and where it leaves off? Let's keep reading. I will cut off the chariot from Ephraim and the horse from Jerusalem, and the bow of war will be cut off, and he will speak peace to the nations. And his dominion will be from sea to sea and from the river to the ends of the earth. Like, serious. Every time you see a quote in the New Testament, go back and read it and just keep reading, the, these aren't the only two times that happens. It's so cool because like, obviously, you keep reading. So the first chapter, verse nine is like the triumphal entry. And we know what happens after he enters Jerusalem, all the things that follow. But then you keep reading in the next verse, what you're finding is like, oh, that's when he comes back. So. It's pretty awesome. Actually, that would really be a fun devotional. To have like, you know, just kind of it split where the first, you know, you're reading, oh, here's this, you know, first advent prophecy, and then like, here's where, here's the next verse, here's the next section. Oh, that'd be fun. Just to kind of keep that in view, because a lot of times we're guilty of either looking back at Jesus or just looking forward. And we're kind of, you know, there's got to be that tension where we see Jesus then and him giving us the marching orders that we are to live by today until his return. And at the same time, living in light of his return, his imminent return that could happen at any time. And that he needs to catch us doing the things that he told his people to do, like what to do two thousand years ago. Like get caught doing the thing that he said when he left. So. All right, so that's Zechariah nine, verses nine and ten. Let's jump over to chapter twelve. Verse ten. I will pour out on the house of David and on the inhabitants of Jerusalem the spirit of grace and of supplication, so that they will look on me whom they have pierced. And they will mourn for him as one mourns for an only son. And they will weep bitterly over him like the bitter weeping over a firstborn. That's interesting. In the next verse, in that day there will be great mourning in Jerusalem like the mourning of Haradrimon in the plain of Megiddo. So Armageddon, Armageddo. So that's kind of a fun connection there. All right, let's move over to chapter fourteen here. And this is one of those that you literally could read the entire chapter. Like it starts with, you know, I don't know if just reading the headings, the subtitles, God will battle Jerusalem's foes. You drop down to verse nine, God will be king over all. So starting at verse nine, and Yahweh, Yahweh will be king over all the earth. In that day Yahweh will be the only one, and his name, the only one. All the land will be changed into a plain from Gebeth to Ramon, south of Jerusalem. But Jerusalem will rise and remain on its side from Benjamin's gate as far as the place of the first gate to the corner gate, and from the tower of Hananel to the king's wine presses. People will live in it, and there will no longer be a curse, for Jerusalem will dwell in security. Now this will be the plague which, which Yahweh will strike all the peoples who have gone to war against Jerusalem. Their flesh will rot while they stand on their feet, and their eyes will rot in their sockets, and their tongue will rot in their mouth.
You weren't supposed to hear that.
I'm not here, Jim. There was mention of the word zombies. But how interesting would, how interesting would it be if, uh, you know, this is what's spoken of like with the sword of his mouth, like at the command that this would happen? I don't know. It will come about in that day that a great panic from Yahweh will fall on them, and they will seize one another's hand, and the hand of one will be lifted against the hand of another. Judah also will fight at Jerusalem, and the wealth of all the surrounding nations will be gathered, gold and silver and garments in great abundance. So also like this plague will be the plague on the horse, the mule, the camel, the donkey, and all the cattle that will be in those camps. Then it will come about that any who are left of all the nations that went against Jerusalem will go up from year to year to worship the king Yahweh Shavu, Lord of Host, and to celebrate the feast of booths. So these are all Gentile enemies of Israel, enemies of the king. And so moving forward for the duration of his kingship, these nations are going to have to make a pilgrimage back to the site of their greatest loss to give homage to the king. You can go to Leviticus twenty-three to read more about the feast of booths. It actually was a feast that just ended last week. And it was a memorial for Israel going forward while they were in the land to remember their wilderness wandering. How many people made it out of the wilderness that left Egypt? Two. Anybody remember them? Joshua and Caleb. That's right. They were the only two that made it out. Everybody else was born in the wilderness and coming into the land. But every year for a week, they were to live in booths to like basically go camping, just like what they experienced in the wilderness. They were to do it, whether they were in the city or in the country, anywhere. And if you were far off and in different land, you were to come back. It was one of the three pilgrimage feasts where you were to recognize that the Lord had provided a place for his people. And so now here, the enemies of God were coming back to recognize the security that God had provided for the place that he had provided for the people of Israel. That's pretty awesome. I, I don't know, that's, I mean, it's insult to injury for sure, but you know, the Lord is the victor. So, but reading on, and it will be that whichever of the families of the earth does not go up to Jerusalem to worship the king, Yahweh Shavu, there will be no rain on them. So this is the weird part. If anybody ever asked, Luke, why are you pre-millennial? Like, it's because there are incredible details like this that speak of a time where the king has returned, and there is a point going forward where people have to do things, where there are celebrations, and all of a sudden, there's no rain on the land if like there's disobedience or anything like that. It's just so much detail that you just can't like, oh, what's this symbolic for? What could it be symbolic for? So, so I just see this as like really rather literal in a sense. So if the family of Egypt does not go up or enter, then no rain. So if the family of Egypt does not go up or enter, then no rain will fall on them. "It will be the plague that which Yahweh smites the nations, who do not go up to celebrate the feast of booths. This will be the punishment of Egypt, and the punishment of all the nations who do not go up to celebrate the feast of booths. In that day there will be inscribed on the bells of the horses, holy to Yahweh; and the cooking pots in Yahweh's house will be like the bowls before the altar. Every cooking pot in Jerusalem and in Judah will be holy to Yahweh Shavuot; and all who sacrifice will come and take of them and boil in them; and there will no longer be a king and knight in the house of Yahweh of Host, Yahweh Shavuot, in that day." So Anybody have any questions so far? Oh Jackie, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay, so next week, we are going to pick up with Ezekiel 37 through 39. So, so Ezekiel fits in with Gog and Magog. And so really, I, this is where I wanted to go, from Zechariah to Gog and Magog and Ezekiel, because I think some of these tie together. So, and it'll provide the background as we move forward in chat, in Revelation 20, it'll provide that Old Testament background for how we can see and see that, how that fits in. Uh, thank you for your patience. Thank you for your grace tonight. Remember, if you have any questions at all, there's a lot of things that I said tonight that are not CCC's official position. I definitely want everybody to understand that. So, alright, God bless you. Have a great week.